Hey everyone, how does it feel to have the last class? This is our last class and I'm just glad I finally made it y'all. This class stresses me out.
What I did, this is your function. Square it. Take the square. Then you square it. This is square root. So it will be 4 over AB. Square, sine square, this one. Sine square, this one. Then I square it. DX, dy. 4 over AB comes in front of the integral. There is no exorbitant panel. This is the constant. Indeed, A and B are the dimensions of the box. So all we need to do is to evaluate these integrals. Two integrals. Theory, quantum theory, and from experiment. If it is momentum, we can observe it. It's a macroscopic variable. We can determine from experiments. This was, this is momentum operator. This is kinetic energy.
So we started August 17th. And then until last class, November 23rd. Uh, we, we covered 38 classes. And seven topics in this course. And this is the overview of this course. Cam 211. I'm willing to help you whenever you need a help. I can recommend a letter, you know, or some advice based on your future career, right? Feel free to contact me. All I have is to help. Thank you so much. This is our last lecture and this Wednesday, no class. Okay, no class, no that. Just focus on your final exam preparation. Please on this slide. Okay, yes?
I'm just gonna say because you're such a great teacher, I'm looking forward to your next class. Cause I take you for, you teach the instrumental methods?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I'll see you next time.
Oh, please, please. Yeah, that's why I see you again, right? And see each other again. Okay, great. All the best ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Lee.
Yeah, enjoy your, uh... Holiday.
Merry kill.
Okay, so, good morning y'all. Look at my hair. I look like yesterday, but it does precise the point. So, hold on. So, I'm fixing to start off with doing active recall. So basically, I'm gonna write down chapter 1, chapter 2, chapter 3, chapter 4 on the board. And write down like certain concepts and just see how I can explain it. How do I know it? So I can see what I don't know, what I need to work on. And then I'm gonna do equations, practice the equations that we had from previous assignments and exams. And then just keep reviewing it over and over and over. So. Let's check. So for chapter 1. Chapter 1. This is funny to me because you can see when I was previously here and this was like last week. Like I mainly be doing in here, just using this whiteboard. So, it's still up here. I erased it though, but you know, we can write over if you like. Chapter 1. Yeah, y'all can, y'all can see it good enough. Okay. So for chapter 1. You need to know the difference between Max Planck. Need to know. Benjamin. Discrete atomic spectra. Need to know black body radiation. Louis de Broglie. And Heisenberg. Principle. So for chapter 1, the major things I need to make sure. I know the difference between classical mechanics and quantum mechanics. Max Planck and his quantum hypothesis, how did he contribute to that? Photoelectric effect, discrete atomic spectra, black body radiation. Louis de Broglie, Heisenberg, uncertainty principle. Chapter 2 was mainly the one dimensional wave equation. How you solve it? It wasn't really, you know, much for that one. Chapter 3 was the Schrodinger equation, the wave function, its importance, the Bohr interpretation, things like that. And then chapter 4, which we just started like two days ago. We have to know the postulate of quantum mechanics. So. So, that's what I was saying. So with classical mechanics, it is based off on macroscopic bodies. Things that are, you know, is very different in comparison to microscopic. Cause you know, we can't see electrons. We can't see cells and protons or neutrons and anything because they're microscopic. You have to see those type of things under a microscope because it's very, very small. So, of course, science has continued to evolve over the years and it's still continuing to evolve. So, classical mechanics was basically the classical ways of thinking before Max Planck came along with the quantum theory and things of that nature. So, with classical mechanics, they believe that energy was continuous. It just could flow however it wanted to. That basically, everything just did what it wanted to do on its own. Like energy was just, it kept going, it kept going. But then as the quantum mechanics came along, energy in quantum mechanics is, it exists as photons, as small pack, uh, as small packets of energy. Known as photons, photon energy. And there is discrete. So meaning, if you think of it as, okay. Think of it as an elevator. An elevator is continuously going up. Of course, it goes down, but it just continues to go up. We just gonna, I'm just use that. In comparison to you have an elevator going up, in comparison to stairs, you have, you gotta go up, 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 up. So it's like discrete, like you got this level, this level, this level. So energy in quantum mechanics is discrete. It can only go to certain states or you know, states of energy. It's not, it can't be in between this state or in between this state. It goes from this level to this level to this level. So it's very discrete. So that's the main concept about quantum mechanics. And quantum mechanics relates to microscopic. So bodies of energy like with black body radiation. That could, so the things, the three concepts on the board, black body radiation, discrete atomic spectra, and photoelectricity. Could not be explained by classical mechanics. Okay, now I'm fixing to go through and just write what I remember. The difference between classical mechanics and quantum mechanics. So, that's by Max Planck. Developed. Quantum theory. Quantum, which means that, you know, quantum theory. That stated. Energy emitted. And quantized. The quantum theory, the state of the energy, we can add electrons. Quantized. Also derived, the work body radiation. Well, photoelectric effect. Provided existence of the particle-like behavior of electro-magnetic radiation. Photoelectric effect is, occurs when light in the form of photons. When light in the form of photons. Is radiated onto a surface. And electrons are ejected. So, the photoelectric effect provides existence of the particle-like behavior of electro-magnetic radiation. Occurs when light in the form of photons is radiated onto a metal surface and electrons are ejected. And so, within the photoelectric effect, we have the work function. And we have the, we have the work function and we have the threshold frequency. So the work function is the energy of the metal surface. And so it is the minimum energy, the work function is the minimum energy. So, so that's the minimum energy. Or something, I can't remember. The threshold frequency is the minimum frequency needed to overcome the work function. To eject electrons. Now that much, discrete atomic spectra. So for the discrete. Let me see, do I need to zoom in so y'all can see more? Make sure. Is it supposed to go right here? I don't know. I hope y'all can see that. This three atomic spectra is. Is the series of lines. This three atomic, the series of lines that represent. That represent. Energy in the form of light passes through a prism. The energy in the form of light passes through a prism. To emit. Different radiations based on its frequency. Based on its frequency. And discrete atomic spectra consists of four lines. Four lines known as the Lyman series, the Ballmer series, the Pashin series, and the Brackett series. The Lyman represents the ultraviolet light. The Ballmer represents the visible. Pashin represents the near infrared region. And this represents the infrared region. And it corresponds to 1, 2, 3, or 4. And for the discrete atomic spectra, each atom has its own characteristic. So each atom has its own atomic spectra. And unlike black body radiation, which depends on temperature. Discrete atomic spectra depends on the frequency and the wavelength. So also yeah, discrete atomic spectra, it is the lines that represent the energy in the form of light passes through a prism. To emit different radiation based on its frequency. And which is very, that's why it's called discrete. Because it only allows certain wavelengths. Only absorbs slash emits certain wavelengths. Okay, now we have the black body radiation. Black body radiation was developed by Max Planck. And each black body radiation occurs. When material bodies are heated to give off energy. In the form of radiation. Developed by Max Planck, occurs when material bodies are heated to give off energy in the form of radiation. The black body radiation, the black body radiation, well, developed by Max Planck, depends on temperature. On radiation that is dependent on temperature. On temperature in which the frequency is directly proportioned. To the energy. And. And then Louis de Broglie, I know he said that matter has wave-like, uh, slash particle-like properties. His equation is lambda equals to h over p. Now, we're gonna move to the other side. So for the Schrodinger equation. The Schrodinger equation provides solutions. Yeah, solutions. Provides solutions. Known as the wave function. The solution known as the wave function. It counts. For the movement. Counts for the, the wave movement of a particle. The function. Provides the total description of all systems. It accounts for all dynamic elements such as energy, momentum. And position. Interpretation is the probability density interpretation. It is the square root of the wave function. It provides the probability density. That's the, uh, locate a particle. Okay. I think I saw the one dimensional. I don't remember this. How to solve. I think I saw it by the method of separation variables. I just went through and wrote all that I could remember. Um, I know, I know for a fact, I don't remember the one dimensional wave equation. I do know the three dimensional, um, wave equation. Um, I need to get down. First of all, let me see what do I remember for the postulates of quantum mechanics. I know that, I know postulate 1 stated that the state of any, oh, zoom this out. Okay, I know it said that the state of any system is completely, ugh, spelled it wrong. Completely specified by its wave function. So the state of any system is completely specified by its wave function. Meaning all possible information comes from the wave function. Which means that its total description accounts for all dynamic elements. And the important property of postulate 1 is that the probability density. Of locating a particle. Can be, excuse my hammering y'all. Can be found in the interval dx at position x. That's postulate 1. Postulate 2 states that quantum mechanical operators, quantum mechanical, quantum mechanical operators represent. Classical mechanical variables. And then postulate 3 said that quantum mechanic quantities must be eigenv values of operators, I think. And I don't remember 4. So, yeah, now I'm fixing to start working on these equations and then, yeah. Okay, it's currently 3:33. I'm fixing to work on these, um, problems. And then I'm just gonna give myself a break and then I'll study some more tonight after I come back from my friend's birthday dinner. But this will be all for this video. So, we have a probability of a particle in a box equation that I'm gonna do. Um, we have calculating the energy of a three dimensional particle in a box. We have doing the second partial different, different, ugh, differentiation equations. However, I said that. With certain conditions and with partial derivatives and second derivatives. And then this. So, yeah, um, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not really too fun. I know how to do it, but it's like, you know, it's very tricky. So I'm still gonna try to do it on camera and yeah, whatever I don't get right, I'll correct the steps and work on it again later. Cause I need a break from studying. This was a question I got wrong on the last exam. So, this is a function as a whole. So it's saying to with respect to y. So, the partial derivative with respect to y is the 6 would come down in front. So then it would be 6x squared e to the 6y. And she asked for the eigenvalue. So 6 would be the eigenvalue of this function. And this entire thing is the function. Second derivative. So we know, okay, the first derivative, it would be alpha negative sine alpha x. That's the first derivative. So the second derivative, take the derivative again. Derivative of negative sine is cosine, but we keep the negative. And the alpha becomes square. It'd be negative alpha squared cosine alpha x as the second derivative. So it says solve for e squared y over d squared x minus 5y. So, okay. So we know that it's asking for the second derivative, but we know that y is equal to e to the alpha x. I'm gonna just pick the camera up so y'all can see. So, solve for this. But we know the starting form is y equals to e to the alpha x. But it wants the second derivative. So the second derivative would be alpha squared e to the alpha x. Stop going out of focus. It'd be alpha squared e to the alpha x corresponding to this part. Now we have minus 5dy. So it'd be minus 5. And so the original form, this asks for the second derivative. This only wants the first derivative. So the first derivative would be this, but only one alpha in front. So it'd be minus 5 alpha e to the alpha x. And in case you're wondering, okay, what is derivative? Derivative is basically when you bring down the constant that's in front of the x in front of the e, or in this case, e. So, second derivative mean we brought down alpha two times because we wanted the second derivative. So this wants the first derivative, so it's just negative 5 alpha e to the alpha x. Now, plus 6y. This doesn't want the derivative of y, it just want y. So now it would be 6e to the alpha x equals to 0. So now, this is our expression right here. So to solve for alpha, you basically need to factor this out. So, we're gonna factor out the e to the alpha x and write an expression. So it'll be e to the, I'm trying to write on camera, so y'all can just get a good view. E to the alpha x. Take that out of the equation and now we just have alpha squared minus 5 plus 6. So now, we want the solve for alpha. So, this is just, I still do this from middle school. Um, that times that we want 6, we want negative 5. So, 2 times 3 would give us 6 and negative 2 minus 3 would give us negative 5. So that's how I factor it out. So, we know alpha is going to be. So we have alpha equals to 2 and 3 as our value. So now we have the value of alpha. as our value. So now we have the value of alpha. Once you have that, then you go write the general equation. The general equation is think, this, and I know it's C one e to the and so our two values for alpha. We got our values for alpha is two and three, right? So for the general equation, when we write it, the general equation would be C one e to the alpha x plus C two e to the alpha x. So now we're gonna put in alpha. So we know our value is two and our value is three for alpha. And this was actually supposed to stay equal to zero and this should be equal to negative one. And this should be zero. So, yeah, now that's better. So we have y of zero equal to C one e to the two x plus C two e to the three x. So now we're going to put in our value for x, which is zero. I'm not gonna rewrite it, I'm just gonna put it in place instead. So now, once you do that, of course, if you have something being multiplied by zero, it'll just be zero. So now we won't have any exponent. So now our y of zero would just be C one plus C two equal to negative one. That's our first expression for our first um condition. Now, we have to do the second condition to solve for or finish this equation. So our second condition is one, it wants the derivative, the first derivative, cuz if it wanted the second derivative, it would have been d squared, but it wants the first derivative with x equal to zero with this equal to zero as well. So now, form, we have alpha C one e to the alpha x plus C two I'm tripping, I'm tripping. Alpha C two e to the alpha x. So ugh, my camera is dying, hold on. Okay, I'm back. Had to go change the battery, y'all. So now that we know the values of alpha, we're gonna replace it. So we know that alpha is equal to two for this condition, we're gonna replace that. Three. And then okay, so yeah, we put, we substituted in the values for alpha. Now we need to substitute for this condition. It says x is also equal to zero, equal to zero. So multiply by zero, multiply by zero. This now becomes two, ugh, now becomes two C one plus three C two equal to zero for this expression because the exponents were multiplied by zero, so that got rid of that part. So now, we have to solve for the values of C one and C two to get our final um solution. So we can start off with this expression, okay? So if we wanna just say, we get to choose, I wanna choose, I wanna get C one first. So C one would be equal to put this on this side, you need to subtract, C one would be equal to negative one minus C two. So that's what we get for C one. So if we substitute the value of C one into this equation, we get two times negative one minus C two plus three C two equal to zero. And then we get negative two, two times negative C two minus two C two and then plus three C two equal to equal to zero. So let's get this on this side of the equation and do this, so three minus two, you get C two equal to negative two after you do all of that, cuz you wanna solve for C two. So you want C two on the side by itself. So you get C two equal to negative two. So if you get C two equal to negative two, we can solve for the actual value using the initial one. So we already, you know, rearranged that to try to get C one. Now, we're gonna actually get the value of C two, I meant the value of C one. So we substitute C two for two that we just got equal to negative one. C one is now equal to negative three. So we have our values for C one, our value for C two. So now, when we go and write our answer, we know C one is equal to three. It'll be three e to the, our value for alpha, which is two plus, well, actually it'll be minus since it's minus two, minus two e to the three x, because this is our, these are our values for alpha that we solved in the beginning and we just solved for the value of C one and C two. So this is our final solution. Okay, so for this one, we have d squared of x over d of t squared with this, with this, okay. I really can't explain it that well because y'all, I said, physical chemistry is just, it's its own thing. So I do know that you got two general solutions for it. The first, um, general solution I just showed y'all was C one e to the alpha x plus C two e to the alpha x. That's one way to um answer that, but since we're doing it with w, I see the w, so the other way is C three was it, cos? C three cos wt plus C four sine wt. That's the other general solution that you can use when solving these. So since I see wt, I know I'm gonna be using this general solution. So now we have C three cos wt plus C four sine wt. That's our general solution and these are our boundaries. These are the boundaries right here. So the boundaries for this is, is the first one says it's equal to zero and x is equal to zero. So now, and in this case, well, x of t or whatever you wanna call it. So now, multiply by zero, multiply by zero. So this is where you have to know like your trig functions and whatnot, so cos of zero is always equal to one and sine zero is always equal to zero. So C four, there would be no value for C four. And so now you have, since cos is equal to one, cos zero is equal to one, you just get C three. And so now you, since you don't have a C four, we see that C three is equal to zero. But hold on, let me make sure I'm doing this right. Okay, so yeah, I'm on the right track. I just had to make sure. So now you have C three equal to zero. So it might be a little confusing, but don't ask me, ask whoever made this equation, okay? Thank you. So C three is equal to zero, so now that we have C three equal to zero, when we go back into our equation, it'll just be, now we just have C four sine wt because we no longer have C three. And so now, we use this second boundary condition. It wants the derivative with t equal to zero. So the derivative of C four sine wt would be w cuz we pulled, remember, with derivatives, you pull out the constant in front of the variable. So we pull out the w to be w C four sine times for this condition, t is equal to zero. So sine zero and it's equal to vo, cuz that's the condition it gives us. So remember that sine zero is equal to zero. So yeah, so this whole thing I'm tripping, I'm tripping, I'm tripping. No, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Yeah, that's not right, cuz I was supposed to take the derivative. Stretch that. Sin wt, so back to what we said, okay, but I took the derivative, but I didn't take the derivative of sine. So the w comes in front, but the derivative of sine is cosine, so that's where I had to, cuz I knew something was wrong. Cuz cos zero is equal to one. So if this whole thing is now equal to one, you have w C four equal to vo. And it wants us to solve for C four, so in order to get C four by itself, C four would be equal to vo over w, and that is the solution for that. Yeah, that's the solution for that. Um, so please don't ask me why. But that's the solution. That's the solution my teacher gave me and I did the correct steps, so that's it. So now on to calculating the energy for a three dimensional um particle in a box. The equation for calculating the energy is h squared pi squared over two m times n of x squared over a squared plus n of y squared over b squared plus n of z squared over c squared. So that is the equation for calculating the energy of a three dimensional particle in a box. And she gave us these values, so and then E one one gives us the coordinates for n, y, and z. So this corresponds to n, this corresponds to y, and this corresponds to z. So if she gave us E two one two, the value of n would be two, the value of y would be one, the value of z would be two. So that's just what that means. So E one one tells me that n, I mean that x, y, z will be one squared. So now we get h squared over pi squared over two m times, so we know that it'll be one squared on top plus one squared plus one squared, that'd just be one, of course, but we still have a squared, b squared, and c squared. So if we want to solve for a, it says that a is equal to one point five c. So no, actually we want to solve for c. So we would divide by one point five, a divided by one point five. So c is equal to, um, c is equal to a divided by one point five. So this value for c would be a over one point five squared, that'll be that. And so now, so back to what I was saying, um, I be having to pause and make sure I'm on the right track because I'm giving y'all like the raw thought process of how I be thinking while doing these um equations. So I found the value of c given to me. But now, since we know that c is equal to a over one point five, we can find a. So since she initially gave us that a is equal to one point five c and we know, and we now know c, we'll multiply one point five by a over one point five. And so, once you do that, you get one point five a over one point five. And so then, the one point fives cancel out and you just get a is equal to a, alright? So for a squared, it'll just be a squared. So, okay, had to make sure. So yeah, I was right. So a squared would just be a squared, cuz a is equal to a. And if you do the same thing for b, it'll end up being the same thing, but um, I need to, I'm just coming over here and show y'all. So if we have b is equal to one point five c as well, and we want to um get the value of c first so that we can calculate b, then it would just be, of course, divided by one point five, divided by one point five. So now c is equal to b over one point five. So now, if we substitute that in, one point five times b over one point five, that cancel out and b is equal to b. Wait, no, that's not right. Yeah, no, um, it's right, but it's not right because we already had the value of c. So I didn't need to do this part. I just was supposed to substitute the value of c, which we had found to be a over one point five, so b is equal to a. So b is equal to a, so b squared would actually be a squared right here. And so put it over here, a squared, a squared, and then this would be a over one point five times a over one point five would be a squared over, hold on, it'd be a squared over two point two five, but you know you can't have a fraction in the denominator, so the two point two five would actually just come to the top and the a squared would stay on the bottom, and since this is square and it's one, you know it's just gonna be one. So now, all you do is combine the like terms. H squared, pi squared over two m and then one plus one plus two point two five, that's two plus two point two five. You get four point two five over a squared, because they're all like terms. So that was why it was very important that when I did b, I put it in terms of a using the same value, so that you just get a simplified version like this. And so that's how you solve for the energy, when that's how far she want, she wants us to go right now. If it was, you know, or you need to, you know, if she was to give us the values, then it would be whatever. So that's that. And now, for the probability of finding the particle in a box. Lord, last problem, last problem. Okay. Now for the last problem, probability. So first of all, the probability equation is this sine x one to complex conjugate times sine of x dx. That's the probability, but the value of sine is this expression right here. So it'll be radical two over l times sine and pi x over l times that again. Radical two over l times sine and pi x over l again. And so then, once you have these two being multiplied by each other, you get okay, first of all, since these two are multiplied and they're being there the same, it'll be squared, but since they're radical, it'll, the radical will go away. So once the radical is squared, it'll go away. So now, we wanna pull that out of the function or integral, and then you get sine squared and pi x over l d of x. So my teacher told us that and pi x over l is equal to alpha. So it'll be sine squared, they're a little loud in here, y'all, my bad. Sine squared alpha x d of x with two over l in the front. And then, these are the boundary conditions. And so I believe you do l over four on the bottom and l over two at the top. Yeah, but you don't have to put the boundary conditions just yet. Okay, so sine squared alpha x, it's a lot to remember, y'all. Sine squared alpha x has its own, it's its own, um it's just like a common uh integral or something, but it has its own value, so I'm gonna show y'all. So the value of sine squared alpha x is equivalent to one over two x minus one over four alpha times sine two alpha x. That's this entire. So this entire thing is equal to that. Well, not that, but this. So now, you have two over l times one over two x minus one over four alpha times sine two alpha x with the boundary conditions l over two, l over four. And so now, you have to substitute this into the where the value of x is at, and I'm facing to do that right here. Just to make sure y'all following along, even though y'all probably don't care or even know what's going on. We had the square or, you know, you see it's multiplied by the same thing, multiplied twice. So then the radical disappeared, we pulled that out of the equation, and we have sine squared with and pi x over l. N over pi over l is equal to alpha, so that's how I got sine squared alpha x dx. Sine squared alpha x is equivalent to this expression that I circled right here. So that's why sine squared alpha x became this whole expression right here. So that's why sin squared alpha X became this whole expression right here. And then this is where you apply the boundary conditions, and you substitute this for X and this for X as well, but you subtract the two. So, yeah, now, it'll be one over two X, but might as well just put that on top. So it'll be X which is L over two, so it'll be L over that'll just become L, it'll just become L over four, because once you put in X which is L over two, it become L over four. And so minus one over four alpha. We know that alpha right here, what does she say alpha is? I'm trying to remember. So one over four alpha. Alpha What is that? What is it? What is it? What is it? Yeah, alpha is equal to N pi over L. So since alpha is equal to N pi over L, it'll be, wouldn't it be L over here and then N pi, or would it be? No. Yeah, I'm doing it wrong. It'll be N pi over four L. Okay, so we have that, L over four minus N pi over four L, but we have that times Hold on, wait a minute. Okay, that's why I was confused, because when I wrote it, she gave us the value of N to be two. So now, yeah, so back to what I was saying, it's L over four, N pi over L. Right? Hold on. Okay, so actually, I did this part wrong. So four alpha is equal to N pi over L. Let me just go ahead and write it. It is, it is equal to N pi over L, but the L comes on top and the N pi goes on bottom. Yeah, that's the part I did wrong. N pi goes on top and the L goes on the bottom. So we know the N is two though, so it'll be two pi. So this is gonna be multiplied by sin times two alpha. By sin times two alpha, which is N pi over L times two again. Whatever, so then you get L over four minus two pi over four L. Okay, so you get sun, hold on. Okay, but I'm back, I'm back, I'm back. I had this written wrong. So it's supposed to be L over eight pi, I had the pi on the top, plus me on the bottom. So really and truly, let me just write, so it looks better than that. And pi. One pi X. Okay, so now you get L, so L over four minus L over eight pi times sun for pi X. And so X is L over two. Actually, I'm just gonna show y'all on my iPad, because it's just, this is way too much, and I'm not even having enough space. So I'm just showing y'all the equation on my iPad, cuz, yeah. It don't even make sense. So this was from the last test, um the test correction. So this is basically the problem that I was working out, um, doing from there, so we're right here. One over two XL over four times N pi, and in this case, N is given to us S two. So then you have sin times two times two pi X. So with those boundary conditions, it comes down and you get L over four minus L over eight pi, you get sun four pi times L over two. See, cosine two times two, you get sine four pi times L over two. Give it a damn minute. Okay, yeah. So, a little focus. So you get sine four pi L over two over L. And, um, where's my apple pencil? Dang it. But basically, anything that's sin N pi will be zero. So this whole equation would just be zero, so that'll just go away. Anything sin N pi is gonna be zero, so this is gonna be zero. So that's why you just bring this down. Well, you know, the L's cancel out, when you have the L's canceled out, and so you just left with sine two pi. You left with sine pi, so yeah, they're equal to zero. So then it left us behind with L over four minus L over eight times two over L. And so, then it's just simplified to get one over four, y'all. I'm sorry, my brain tapped out, so that's all, I'm, that's all I'm giving. Yeah, yeah, we're just gonna leave that a little cliffhanger. But, yeah, this is Welcome to Life as a Chemistry Major, um. Yeah, enjoy this video. Um I'm going to come back to that problem later. I just, yeah, I need a break. I've been here since like nine AM, as y'all can see. So I don't work, I don't work at nine to five, like it's four forty one. So I'm gonna go upstairs, chill, put some on my stomach. Just something light, since I'm going out to eat later and yeah, this was my study with me for finals video, because I have a final tomorrow at eight AM. Well, I'm gonna get there at eight AM, but exam is at nine AM. Um, I still have to print out my equation sheet. But, yeah, that'll be my only in-person exam, the one that this is the class like I really have to study for. And, because analytical chemistry is not really, you know, analytical chemistry, like I love analytical chemistry, it's basically like another form of general chemistry, but, yeah. So if you like this video, make sure you give it a thumbs up, subscribe to my channel for more, and tune in to the next semester of HBCU Vlogs and, what's it called? Of HBCU Vlogs and Chem Chrono, uh, Chem Chronicles, that's how you know I need sleep, that's how you know, bye.